This week we're talking about the importance of the Word. The Word and prayer go hand in hand. And if you don't have an understanding of that, then your prayers will always just hit the wall, or it will seem that your prayers don't get answered. Because, and we'll get into this, sometimes you're praying, and it's not even the will of God. So you've got to know the Word so you can know what to pray accurately. So on your paper there, and it's a lot of Scriptures today, we'll be going kind of fast, and some of them, of course, they're there, you can read them later. "The Word changes you." That's the first point. Prayer changes you also, so they work hand in hand. But what the Word does, and you'll see later, but the Word actually helps deal with the soul, with the human part of you. When you pray, especially if you pray in the Spirit, you're praying, you and God, nothing else is going on. It says your brain is not even working. They've actually done tests where they put people on those sensors and hooked things to their brains and made them pray in the Spirit, and it was flat line. You know, nothing's going on in your mind. So when you pray in other tongues, nothing's going on in your mind, that's spirit to spirit. Of course, when you pray in your understanding and you speak the Word, then you're speaking life. Romans 12:2, talking about changing you, it says, "Don't copy the behavior and customs of this world, but let God transform you into a new person by changing the way you think. Then you will know what God wants you to do, and you will know how good and pleasing and perfect His will is." So don't be conformed to this world. How do you do that? You have to read the Word. You have to understand His ways. We used to do in youth ministry, we used to tell the kids, and we were young, obviously, but 15 years ago, we'd tell the kids, you know, "Don't do this, do this, don't do this, don't do this." And about two years in, we realized, you're going the wrong way. You need to teach them the Word and not just hand them on what not to do, show them why. Which Josh was leading, and he was always really good at that, but we really drove that home. Why are you doing what you're doing? Let's understand what's going on. So you don't even know what's the behavior and customs of the world if you don't know the Word. And then Ephesians 4:22 and 24, these are all familiar, that's why we can go through them kind of fast. It says, "Put off your old self, which belongs to your former manner of life and is corrupt through deceitful desires, and be renewed in the spirit of your minds, and put on the new self created after the likeness of God, in true righteousness and holiness." Last week Pastor, it's on there, I would recommend you listen to his sermon, he was talking about mind renewal. And you have to, it has to work its way out. Your mind is not immediately saved. Your emotions are not immediately saved. I loved how, I don't remember the exact example he said, but you know, if you were a drug addict, and you're completely crazy, and you're nuts, and then you get saved, sometimes, you know, miraculously those drugs, you'll never have another problem. But most of the time, it's just you have to work, you have to work. But still those bad attitudes, still those tendencies, the anger, the frustration, that's a process. I don't know, there's only a handful of people that got saved, and a miracle happened, and they were like a different person, night and day, personality, everything changed. So that is like a .0001%. So prayer, prayer and the Word, they connect you to God's heart. Prayer is about you sitting and saying, "God, I need you." And the Word is the blueprint on how He can get you to change. And He's not in the business of changing you because He's like, He's that taskmaster, "Do this, do this, do this." It's because He knows all your future. He knows everything that's gonna happen. He wants to get involved and get you, some things, if you need, if I need Jamie to help me with something, but I'm an impatient, frustrated person, and she's trying to get the help to me, and I haven't worked on that character flaw, she's trying to get something to me, but I'm too impatient to listen, and I'm missing solutions and simple things. I've learned this the hard way. I told them last week, you know, I was impatient, and about 10, 15 years, I was really impatient. And I wouldn't listen, and I'd stay frustrated, and simple solutions would come, and I wouldn't even hear the answer. And so now, I've trained myself, listen, listen and hear what, simple wisdom, I get wisdom from my children. God gets answers to me through my kids. They don't know it. So God is always speaking. And the primary way that He's gonna speak is the Word. I wrote this down. You can pray eight hours a day if you want, if you had that time. And then you could walk out of prayer and snap at your kids and husband. I don't know if you guys have ever done that. I've been praying, I've been in my prayer time, like my bedroom, my blanket, all my books, sitting. And my son wakes up at crack of dawn. I get up at 4:45, and he'll get up at 5:30, so, because he hears me, I guess. So I'll sit down, and I hear, I can hear his door crack. And about two years ago, when I was really fighting to pray, he'd come in, "Mama," and I'd go, "I'm praying!" "Sorry, what can we..." You know, so you're in prayer, so the soul has to be dealt with, and we've worked through that, thank God. Now, when I hear the door crack, I've trained myself, "It's coming, smile, Pat is back. It's only temporary, he'll be 18." Okay? So you guys probably already know this, we're gonna go through the next part real fast. You are three parts, there's three parts to you as a human here on this earth. First, the lone ends, 5:23 says, "And the God of peace Himself sanctify you holy, and may your spirit, and soul, and body be preserved entire without blame at the coming of our Lord Jesus Christ." Your soul is your mind, your will, and your emotions, the way you think, the way you act, the what you do. Mark 12:30 says, "You're supposed to love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, with all your strength." That's your soul. Your body is your flesh and blood. That's what's gonna die. When you die, that's it, that body's gone, says you get a new resurrected body. James 2:26 says, "For as the body apart from the spirit is dead, even so faith apart from works is dead." 1 Corinthians 6:19 through 20, "Do you not know that your body is a temple of the Holy Spirit within you, whom you have from God? You are not your own, for you were bought with a price; so glorify God in your body." That's your flesh and blood. It's like Pastor said, if you were born skinny, I won't say exactly what he said, if you're born skinny, you'll be skinny after you get saved. If you were born not skinny, you won't be skinny, you'll be that same body that's here when you get saved. So the Spirit is the real you. When you die, your spirit is what goes to heaven, body stays. Romans 8:10 says, "As if Christ is in you, the body is dead because of sin, but the Spirit is life because of righteousness." So we understand, I read those Scriptures, because I don't want you just to buy what I'm saying, I want you to hear it with your ears, the Scriptures that prove the three parts. Sometimes we're in church so much, we just hear stuff, but you have to see it and know, okay, I have to really deal with this. So when you accept Jesus as King in your life, your spirit is immediately reborn, that's it, you're new. It is made new. Everything else takes time and intentional effort to change. And I put on your paper, I recommend you read the entire chapter of Romans 8. But that whole chapter, if you look at, this is the Word, this is my baby, this is my Bible that I've had for 15 years, this is some cute duct tape. I just, if you start a Bible over, it's horrible. You know you're supposed to write in your Bible, you know you're supposed to make notes, and you're supposed to pray. And sometimes if I'm praying, I'll write something in the notes, a revelation that the Holy Spirit is, I'm going through a season. Sometimes I'll put dates, so I know, and I'll read it, and go, "Oh, that was what I was going through, praise God for that victory." So you should definitely write in your Bible, but you should read Romans 8. I'm not gonna get sidetracked, I love Romans 8. Second point is, the Word tells you the truth about Satan. John 10:10 says, it's not on your paper, "The thief comes only to steal, kill, and destroy. I came that they may have life and have it more abundantly." The devil is a liar. It says, "He is the chief of liars." Whenever something comes to you, and it steals peace, it steals joy, it steals patience, it steals, if anything is stealing, it's him. It says, "All good things come from above." Anything that's not good, say, "It ain't, it's either me or the devil," or some other person, but you just gotta walk in love with those people. So the thief comes to steal. So the Bible's gonna tell you the truth about Satan, you need to know the truth about him. It's like Pastor, we're not gonna reiterate it, but Pastor talked about that Sunday. He's, I'm telling you, I already had this for like five weeks, and he talked a lot of what we were saying, we're gonna say today. But the devil comes in, and he tries to get in your ear and tell you things, and not in your physical ear, speak in your heart, maybe you'll have an interaction at the grocery store. Those things happen, and they come to steal, steal peace. I've had people, I think they were trying to give me a compliment, but I've had people try to compliment me when I was in my early twenties, 21, you know, I looked 10 years younger anyway. So when you're 21, you wanna be 21, I mean, you just hit a milestone, it's a big deal. But I looked 10 years younger on my best day, dressed up to the hilt. And people would try to, I guess they're trying to pay a compliment, they would make comments about my young age, and, "Ah, you don't look a day over 12, blah, blah, blah." So, you know, that would steal. And if I would receive that, see, people can say stuff, and you can hear it, and just, or you can receive it. And that's an opportunity for the devil to steal your peace, to frustrate you. It used, I used to buy into it, I'd eat it, hook it, sinker, and I would be frustrated for, it could last for days, because it really bothered me for some reason. But you need to know the truth about him, you need to know who is influencing you. Is it God? Is it my flesh? Or is it the devil? And then you know how to pray, then you know how to deal with it. God has already done His part by sending Jesus. He gave the Word, He sent Jesus. So the prayer, like we talked about last week, connects you with heaven, and that's where you'll get your answers, and you, you never, you know the devil, Pastor talked about this, devil will quote Scripture to you, to get you to believe his lies. That's why I give you many Scriptures, that's why I tell you to read Romans 8. Go take it in the context of all Scripture. And listen, if there's Scripture comes to you, and it's what you wanna do, and it's confirming what you wanna do, I would at least check it by two more sources to make sure. Because when it's something you wanna do, and somebody's in your ear going, "Yeah, do that, yeah, do that," I always go, "I don't know if that's the Lord." So you have to learn to listen, because all He wants to do is kill, steal, and destroy from your life. And of course, He can't come and just kill you. Real quick, you know, Adam and Eve, they rejected God, they were in the garden, perfect circumstance, they didn't obey, they believed a lie. When they rejected, it says that Satan, they gave their rule and reign to Satan, and he's the King of this world now. So that's why we have to accept Jesus, that's why we have to know the Word, that's why we have to do all that we have to do on this planet Earth. If just getting saved, that was the end result, you'd go to heaven, that'd be great, we'd all just go to heaven. But you're here for a purpose, that's why He left you. And don't bite, John 12:31 says, I don't think it's on your paper, it says, "Satan, the ruler of this world, will be cast out." That's just proven to you, cause him the ruler of this world. I know some, what, we're trying to debunk some of the myths of prayer. If you go into prayer thinking it's all up to God, you're not gonna get very far, and you're gonna stay very frustrated. You won't get the victory, you won't, you won't be praying the right stuff, and you'll just be frustrated. So if you can identify, okay, this, I need to know this about Satan, I need to know this about myself. And a good example, you know, when trying to understand God and His ways, a lot of His Word is warnings. It's not because He want, He's a taskmaster, it's because, like, do you guys realize, I like to know how things work, that when God instituted washing your hands, and the Old Testament was like, "If you don't do this, don't eat that," you know, and He instituted washing hands. Culturally, the other nations did not wash hands, and they had disease, just infiltrate. He's a genius. Before we knew about antibacterial, He said, "Wash your hands, you're ceremonially unclean, you know, go wash your hands." And so He's a genius, and He has warnings throughout His Word to help you and to guide you. And I like to think of this example, you know, when you have a bonfire, which we love bonfires in the fall and the winter, the kids will say, "Don't touch the fire, don't get near the fire, don't run by the fire, don't touch the fire." And so if they didn't, thank God they have, and you stay close guard, but if they didn't, He'd warn them, they just walked up and stuck their hands in the fire, and just did what they wanted to, that's what it would be like if you ignore the Word. You're just going through life, and you're just getting burned, life is burning you, people are burning you, circumstances are burning you, you're getting all these wounds that are unnecessary. And if you just take time, and it does, we talked about that last week, it takes time to change your mind. It's renewal of your mind, you're having to renew it. It's called that for a reason, because it takes time. So C, number three, says, "The Word prepares you." Jeremiah 20:91 says, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans for wholeness and not for evil, to give you a peace and hope." Praying daily and reading the Word daily keeps you focused, keeps you focused on your, on God's agenda, keeps you focused for what He's got you doing in that season. It's not, it's just not always easy to pray and read the Word, you know, and it's not, it takes time, and it takes getting still. So whenever you're reading the Word, like, we did this, we showed this last week, so if I read Romans 8:26, I say, "So too," the amplified version, "the Holy Spirit comes to our aid. He bears us up in our weakness, for we do not know what to pray, nor how to offer it worthily as we ought; but the Spirit Himself goes to meet our supplication and pleads on our behalf." So if I was in my, I would say that, I'd say, "Lord, I don't know what to pray." But Romans 8:26 says that the Holy Spirit will come and help me in my weakness. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. Like, we got this spring event coming up, and so that gives me purpose, I've got three months, we're just planning, we're doing, I've got, well, after that, I've got about six weeks before the kids are out of school. So I'll go do that, that's the kind, and I've already been praying, okay, what do you want me to do after the women's spring event? What do you want me to do in the fall? And you just, you go to God, you don't have an agenda, but He carries the things on your heart. You go and you say, "I don't know, you know, and the Spirit's gonna bear me up." And when you do that, you're speaking out, and you hear it. The reason you speak it out is so you can hear it, so the devil can hear it. God already knows it, but you know the devil cannot read your mind, He's not a mind reader. He can't get inside you and work, but He does, and He does sometimes, unless we're not gonna get into that, but He does sometimes have an assignment on certain people. But overall, it's not like you have a demon assigned to your life, you know? There is a certain amount of demons, and they just, they have a lot to do, and unless you're just someone really important, they're probably not that upset. You know, they're doing general havoc in a city or something. So we're not gonna get into all this kind of deep. But you're speaking faith out, so your ears hear it, that's part of the renewal. Whenever we have the prayer cards in the back, when I would read those Ephesians prayers and 1 Corinthians, "Walk in love, be patient, be kind, be patient, be kind." And I'll do that, even today, my kids, we just, I'm gonna say, "Mama is patient, Mama's kind." You know, I'm telling myself that, I'm telling, I'm hearing it, the Cosmos are hearing it, everybody's hearing it, and sometimes, even with the kids, you know, we're kind of loud, you know, they're young, and I won't do it in this microphone, but I'll say, "We walk in love in this house." And there, I'll just look at, "We love each other, we're passionate about each other, we love God." I'm saying that it's faith sometimes. Sometimes it's so I don't go over there and spank out of anger, you know? So you're, the Word is alive, and it changes, and when you speak it, you're changing you, you're changing the atmosphere, and it is preparing you for what's up ahead. You know, if you're gonna make a life decision, you know, we've got some people that are in college, some that are wanting to be married, some are about to be married, and some who are in the middle of marriage, some are gonna have kids, you're, maybe you're all grown, your kids are grown, grandkids are grown, you wanna know, "What do I need to do with this season?" The Word will prepare you, the prayer will prepare you, they work together. Sometimes, I use sweet Mama Lou that's in here as an example, Mama Lou has reached a stage where she's at, her grandkids are getting older, and she'll still have this little cute, she doesn't probably think of it as a ministry, but she has these friends, and they get together, and they visit one another, and they encourage each other, and several of them, including her, they're widows, and they'll have lunch, or they'll stop by one another's house. I forget, she was just telling us, somebody's about to have surgery or something, and they're gonna, you know, they'll call and they'll check, that's a ministry. Ministry's not just in the pulpit, and it's valuable. And so we're all at different stages, trying to figure out what we're supposed to do, and the Word can prepare you. You know, I know that you have to stretch and you have to grow, such as college, you know, I know that that was, that's always a real overwhelming season for young people, you know, but your high school prepares you for college, college prepares you for job, the same, your life prepares you, God is preparing you for that next step. And the Word keeps you rooted and grounded and steady, so you don't get out of the will of God in this season, whatever it is. So, and the last point, the Word forces you to make a choice. Deuteronomy 30, 16, and 19, "For I command you today to love the Lord your God, to walk in His ways, to keep His commands, decrees, and laws. Then you will live, and increase, and the Lord your God will bless you in the land you are entering." 19 says, "Choose life, so that you and your children may live." The Word is supposed to make you uncomfortable. The Word is supposed to make you face reality. That's why I love it. When I feel slightly blinded by my own desires and my own ways, I'll go read Scriptures like that bring truth to me. I don't, I've always prayed, "Lord, I wanna do whatever you wanna do, in whatever season I'm in." And so I'll go and I'll pray those Scriptures. And you've got to know the Scriptures, obviously. It's like Pastor said, "The Holy Spirit aids you, but if you only know one Scripture for God's to love the world," that's as far as you're gonna get, buddy. I mean, for God's to love the world, it's a great revelation, but if you need to know something like, "When I don't know what to pray, the Holy Spirit's gonna help me. When I don't know how I can walk in love," you need to know those foundational Scriptures, and you have to keep reading and reading. So the Word will force you to choose, and God, I love how, I didn't even read the real dramatic version, but it says, in the amplified, it says, "I put life before you, choose life." So He gives, He tells you what to choose, "Choose life." And it's the same way with sin. The reason the Bible is so controversial, especially right now, is because of this truth that it forces you to make a choice. If you, if you don't wanna raise your children in a godly home, and you don't wanna do the rules and the guidelines, then you're gonna really struggle with the Word. If you want to marry someone of the same gender, or if you want to do all the other things, you know, if you wanna be drunk all the time, if you wanna, you know, be irresponsible, the Word has something to say about all of that. The Word has, if you don't work, you don't eat. Wouldn't that be nice if we'd apply that today? Says, "If you don't work, you don't get to eat." So it forces you, you come up against the truth, and you have to make a decision. And you know, 15 years ago, and I know I'm still so young, but 15 years ago, I made a, I had grew up Christian, and I went through, you know, church and youth groups, and I loved God, but I, it wasn't real to me, God was not quite real. I loved Him, I wanted to know Him. And 15 years ago, I came in contact with a group of teenagers that were just on fire for God, and Pastor Josh is one of them. And he was actually preaching and leading the youth group with another guy, and I saw something real, and I wanted it. And I'm only telling you this because it's the only story I know, I don't, can't know all your stories. And I decided I was gonna go all the way. And when I graduated, went to Bible school. Bible school, you had to pray like five days a week, and then at the church we were at, you had to actually show up, it was part of your, if you didn't show up, you got docked points. So you prayed, but I was excited, I prayed there. We prayed before youth group, I prayed there, then I prayed at home, then I was doing all I could, and I was reading the Bible. That's probably where half of the markings in this Bible came from, is that season. So you have to, I'm not just telling you about what I did, you can do the same thing, and most of you are, but you, I'm always challenging myself, take it up a notch. If I'm feeling frustrated, or aggravated, or I don't feel peace, I challenge myself, go back to the Word, do what you, if I don't have victory in this area, it has nothing to do with God. So if God's not involved, what am I doing that's not involving Him? What am I, is Satan involved? Is my flesh involved? Are other humans? And you know, some, just a word of advice, you're not fighting humans, you know this, don't you? It's a very familiar Scripture. We don't fight, we don't wrestle flesh and blood. But we war with principalities, and we're not gonna get into all that deep stuff. But you war with Satan and his kingdom. It's, when you get saved, you're, you are, you're just his enemy, and you didn't do anything. You know, when you're born, you're his enemy, he wants everybody to die, he don't care if you're Christian or not. But you have to realize, I have an enemy, and I have to do something. So if you're not getting victory in an area, it's not really God's fault, it's your fault. And I'm just telling you, it's a very small percentage that it's the devil's fault. So I did, the Word is alive, so we talked about, you have to speak it, you hear it, that's how your mind starts changing, that's why you come to church on Sunday, you're hearing a sermon, and you chant, you apply that, if you come to life groups, you hear that, you're applying that, what you're getting at home, it's just all strength, and it's giving you, it's alive, it's working in you, it's like a medicine. And you need to be getting your wisdom from the Word. When you, when it talks about, it forces you to make a choice, you need to know, you need to have the Word in you, so when people come from the outside, you immediately go, "That's not, that's not God, I don't know what that is, that ain't God." And you can be nice to people, someone, people come up, tell us the strangest things. When they find out you're Pastor, you get all kinds of information you didn't want, and they'll come tell you the craziest things, and you can immediately go, "Ooh, no, honey, that's not right." And you just go, "Okay, yeah," and you smile, you being, you don't make people feel stupid, unless you don't, you know, you just don't. So you just walk in love, and if somebody comes up to me two or three times with the same silly thing, then I might step over and say, "Okay, we need to straighten this out." But you need to know where you're getting your wisdom from. Don't get your wisdom from TV shows, or movies, or the internet. It's okay to watch TV, or listen to music, or, you know, read the news, or watch the news, but you need to make sure that you get your wisdom and your advice from godly people and the Word. And the word of advice is, I just wanted to say this, a godly person, a Christian can be godly, but that doesn't mean they're always the wisest person. So you need to be sure that you don't just go up to anybody, trying to get wisdom from anybody. There's a select few people that I allow to know intimate details in my life. I will not just go up and tell some, just anybody, anything. I'm real careful. If I want counsel and wisdom, I'm going to somebody who I know prays, they're consistent in church, and they are submitted to a pastor. We don't only, I have relationships in this church, but we have relationships outside of the church. And they're gonna be people of prayer, they're gonna be people who read the Bible, they're not gonna be people who sit around and watch daytime TV 24/7. I'm gonna get my advice from godly people, and then what I'm, it mixes with what you're getting in your personal prayer time, and you'll know. You hear something from a godly person, and you'll know immediately, "Okay, that's my answer, you're right, I already was feeling that in my heart." No one should ever tell you what to do. If they do, you, you need to, that's, you need to stand up and say, "I appreciate that." And you say, mark it in your brain, "I ain't doing that." Nobody tells you what to do. A Christian shouldn't, a pastor, no one should ever try to control your life or tell you what to do. Like that, and you know, sometimes people say, "I'm gonna tell you what you should do." And that's them trying to give their advice, so, but you still gotta take it or leave it, you gotta, it's up to you. And if you make a bad choice, and someone gave you advice, you can't say, "Well, it's your fault." No, you did it, you pulled the trigger. So just make sure that whoever you're getting your advice from, that they're people that are prayers, they read the Word, and take all these things, you know, keep all these things in your mind and your heart. things in your mind and your heart.